Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the August 27th, 2024 Planning Commission Regular Meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Simmons? Here. Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner Yodowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Vice Chair Tegney?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here.
We're all present. We have six members on the Planning Commission. Now Melissa Smith resigned her position to take a job in Nevada.
Thank you for that. We are joined this evening by Community Development Director David Loyah. Next, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing *9 on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker? Please, welcome Joanne.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. It's good to see you. I haven't been around the last few meetings, I think. I have three things I usually like to talk about, but before that, I just want to alert you that I have asked City Council to consider putting the earth flag that's hiding over there in the corner next here to the public podium as a way of reminding us that the people of Arcata really care about the earth and what they voted on to do, and it's in an appeal right now. But having it next to us when we're talking and you being able to see us and the earth flag is a good reminder. So that was something I'm asking the City Council about. But I want to talk about the signage for the multimodal event that's happening on Thursday. I walked by a sign, a lawn sign, that talks about it, and there is no date, no place, and no time on that signage, that lawn sign. But there is a QR code, and I find that sort of unacceptable. If you're going to put a sign up, you can put the information on the sign and not require somebody to have a smartphone to QR code all the information. You know, you can keep the QR code up there, but please put the date, time, and place on a physical sign. So that's that. I also want to remind you that I'm getting involved in the review, public review of the regional climate action plan, of which we can all look at and weigh in on, and there's going to be a war finger event. It's really an important part of our planning for our future, for our city, for our Arcata. I walked from the community center today and still see gas-powered lawn mowers mowing lawns, and I just am incredulous that that's still existing. And we know what we need to do, and we can do it now. We don't have to wait for any final report to come out. So the Climate Action Plan, just encouraging people who care to review this and weigh in on it. And I asked the Commission to also really consider that as a really important part of our planning process. We need to adapt our community for what's to come. 107 degrees Fahrenheit in places in Australia in the wintertime right now. So the final thing I want to say is benches. I'm walking all over the place now, and I'm getting older, and I need a place to sit down on occasion. And I really do think we can be creative in this community to create, you know, through a strategic arts plan and other entities to come together and create places for people to rest in our community, because people have places to park their car, but I don't have a place to park myself when I really need to, you know, take a rest on the streets. And it's hot out there, and like I say, I'm not getting any younger. So think about benches throughout the community for people like me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Joanne. David, is there anybody waiting online to join us? All ready. Well, good to see you again after a long absence, and thank you for being involved. This evening, we have one item on consent, and that is to approve the Planning Commission minutes for our regular meeting of July 9, 2024 at 5:30 PM. Does anyone like to or need to pull the item? If not?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
All second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no public hearing this evening, so we will move on to business items. And our business item this evening is to consider topics for the upcoming City Council and Planning Commission Joint Study Session in October. David, can we please begin with a staff report?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief and leave time for discussion, but the City Council and Planning Commission will be having a joint study session on October 30. And as you are likely aware, the purpose of the study sessions are to have a touchpoint between the Council and the Planning Commission at least once a year to, you know, talk about matters that are of importance for, you know, policy or projects that are coming up, things that the Council wishes to provide some guidance on. Gives the Planning Commission an opportunity to talk directly with the City Council about discussions that have been happening in this venue for those items as well. And so we have plenty of lead-up time for this event this year, and so I wanted to give the Planning Commission the opportunity to weigh in on potential agenda items. The City Council's, you know, the one that's in charge of the agenda, the mayor, will set the agenda ultimately, but I thought it'd be nice for the Planning Commission to be able to give some recommendations for topics. I did provide you a list of topics that, you know, I would consider relevant to this year's joint study session in your staff report, including, again, the Inclusionary Zoning and Density Bonus. I know you've talked at length about this. There were some differences of opinion about the ultimate recommendation on this, and so here's an opportunity to get into a little bit more detail just as we go into the final stages of adopting that bit of legislation to provide your input to the Council if you wish to talk about that. We also have a million-dollar HUD Pro Housing Grant, which, you know, you all know I'm very enthusiastic about, that will help us work into the next phase of the planning work that we're doing with the general plan. It'll allow us to do some more form-based codes and develop an accessory dwelling unit program. And so while that's sort of the general concept, the details haven't really been formalized and, you know, where, what areas to start and that sort of thing, so that might be something the Planning Commission wishes to discuss with the City Council. And, you know, just really anything else that's, you know, of interest to you. I did note that we'll be coming up on our local coastal program, public hearings for adoption and submission. Might be a great time to, you know, spend energy on realigning and reminding ourselves of, you know, why the policy is set in place the way that it is currently in the draft and, you know, that we're moving in the right direction for approval of that document. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about any of this material. I did provide a few links to remind folks of what we've done on these in the past, and otherwise, I'd recommend you open to public comment and deliberate on topics for this meeting.
Before we go to public comment, any questions for David? Yeah, Peter?
David, is that grant a done deal? Is that money that is in the bank for the city?
Yes, we've been awarded. I've been attending the meetings to, you know, kick off the grant, and we don't have the money in the bank per se, but yes, we've been awarded. We will be getting that funding.
So follow-up question to that. We just then would need to, if we discuss this with the City Council, figure out what to target with the money?
Yeah, so what we wrote the grant for was to do at least two form-based codes in infill opportunity zones. We didn't identify which ones. Staff has a recommendation, but, you know, we really want to make sure that that's guided by, you know, some sound policy discussions. We also wrote for developing an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Right now, accessory dwelling unit ordinance is so out of date, we call it a second unit ordinance, which, you know, is no longer the term of art. And so we'll be updating that, but we'll also be developing an accessory dwelling unit loan program. And so just having conversations around, you know, what the parameters of that should look like, you know, how we should be targeting marketing, which infill opportunity zones we should be focusing on for these form-based codes, you know, those details of, you know, where we move next in terms of the public engagement and how we develop these work products that we've been, you know, that we've written grants for is kind of a good discussion topic.
May I ask another question? It also says at the beginning of your discussion, first paragraph, "and design specifications for commercial security measures." I don't know that term.
That was, yeah, that was a scissor gate discussion. Scissor gates. I mean, I, it got broad, the discussion got broadened because security gates was very narrow, and as we talked about it, and I think as the City Council discussed it, they realized there were lots of other options that needed to be discussed. You know, I do, I wanted to put that on there because it has been a topic for the City Council and the Planning Commission. I'm not sure that that's the highest order priority for this particular venue. I think it's something we need to work on, but, you know, I just wanted to throw out some of the ideas that we've been talking about, so.
Okay, absent any other questions for David, I would like to move to open public comment on this item. If you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern after and state your name. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing *9 on your phone, and the clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Feel free to kick it off. Joanne, welcome back.
Thanks. Once again, I, my name's Joanne McGary, and to be honest with you, I haven't looked at what you're looking at, but, you know, I've shared with you some of my concerns. I just want to kind of philosophically share that I would love for Arcata to think more holistically when we're talking about planning for the future and, you know, adapting to things like the climate realities and our need for increased housing opportunities of various things, and just to think like an old-growth forest and how diverse it is in terms of shapes and sizes and how, you know, the only tall things in it really are the redwood, old-growth redwood trees, but thinking that way. And with that concept also, I've been very provocative on some social media pages, talking about certain things, including things like bike parking and allowing bikes to have equal access to parking slots as cars do, because we are going to evolve into a society where the individual fossil-fueled cars particularly are going to be phased out, and more and more people will be finding alternative ways to go. So it's all fine and good to create pathways for people to mobilely move, but when you get to a destination like a restaurant or a store, we're limited, those of us who have a different way of getting there. And the park benches or the benches that I was talking about are part of that whole thing, you know? We really need to consider what happens when we have a society where people can't drive a car everywhere. And also, alternative transit, I really would like us to think about a subset shuttle system, perhaps, from the park to the plaza to the marsh, so that people are not racing to the sunset in the marsh and running over pregnant otters, which happened about two years ago, or people aren't up there at the playground pulling out their big SUVs, you know, in a very tight parking space. There's just certain things, you know, the beautiful playground up there is great and it's really well-used, but there's no open bathrooms. There is a porta potty, but I don't think that's appropriate for what we've built up there. And so we just need to think more holistically. I know it's great when we get these grant monies to do these certain projects, but we've got to think about how we get there, what happens, how it works, and, you know, where people can go to the bathroom or sit down. So holistic thinking, please, as we talk about the future. Thanks.
Thanks, Joanne. Anybody waiting online to join in the discussion? All ready. Well, again, thank you for your comments, and I'll bring this matter back to the Commission. Love to hear what you all are thinking about potential topics for our joint study session. Who wants to kick us off? Go ahead, Abby.
I'll kick us off just because I think it might be kind of tangential to the scissor gate discussion, and that is, the city of Eureka recently discussed passing a vacant building ordinance, and I don't know what the existing policies we have say, but do we have, or do we require building owners to provide a building management plan to, like, for the upkeep of their buildings, specifically on the plaza where we have vacant buildings maybe more now than usually, and maybe not just talking about the plaza, other places near the plaza?
Yeah, not currently, we don't know.
Okay, so yeah, that's something I was thinking. I mean, when you're walking that strip on the plaza specifically between the Humboldt Store and the Corner Market, it just seems like it could be better maintained, especially when you have the Alibi that's vacant and then the, what is it, TJ or Sidelines? Yes, thank you, sorry. So, I don't know, maybe something that could also be discussed as part of the scissor gate discussion.
I would second the suggestion. I think it's a good idea. And I, I think Eureka's is going to apply to both commercial and residential buildings, and so that'd be another thing to discuss.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that. I would add the fur worker building to the list of long, empty buildings right on the plaza. Anybody else have other ideas? Joel?
Yeah, I was going to bring up just kind of the plaza generally. From my understanding, the city gets a not insubstantial amount of its revenue from sales tax, sales tax revenue, and I've heard from a number of retail shop owners and restaurant owners that, and from tourists, that people get discouraged from being nearby in or near the plaza because some of the activity that goes on pretty much nonstop. And one of it is probably, you know, one area is maybe vacant buildings being occupied or incentivizing owners to do something with their properties, but it may be broader than that as well, in terms of just the, how the plazas configure. I don't know what the answer is. I know it's been an ongoing issue in the city for, you know, years, but anyway, I support considering the vacant building ordinance, but I wonder if there's anything else in a land use area that we could consider as well.
Question to the three of you, is there a nudge that that topic somehow wants to be part of the City Council Joint Study Session? I mean, I'm fine with it, I'm not rejecting or anything, I'm just wanting to further discussion rather than just that, yes, that would be nice stuff to have in the city of Arcata, and there's a lot of problems that we all agree about, the plaza and scissor gates and these things that we've touched on, but is it, well, the scissor gate portion is the only thing that could even probably be part of that joint study session because there's no ordinance reference or anything else that we could start a conversation now with the City Council on. So that might have, that portion might have to be a future conversation. I don't know, is there a recommendation that scissor gates be part of this or?
I would defer to you, David. I mean, it sounds like there's already stuff on the list that we might not know about, so when it comes to priority or what we have time to discuss, I mean, you could make the topic as narrow as it needs to be if it's a time situation, so I don't really have a preference.
Yeah, the discussions are generally time-limited, I mean, like an hour and a half, and, you know, folks are really generally starting to, you know, be done with the meeting. So just, you know, thinking about how much heavy lifting you can get done in an hour and a half, you know, certainly if this is, you know, what the Planning Commission feels like is the top priority, then you should make that recommendation. You know, I think you're starting to build something that's a little bit more robust if you're including both commercial security measures, scissor gates, you know, vacant, vacancy ordinance, and maybe some other, you know, issues around the plaza, you know, that could be a pretty meaty discussion. So why don't we kind of package that as one option? When you get done with this discussion, maybe you can come back and rank them and decide these are, you know, how we'd like to recommend them to the Council?
I mean, I think there's a strong through line there between the vacant properties, the resultant desire of adjacent property owners to have scissor gates in the general situation on the plaza, right? I mean, that's all kind of one issue, different aspects of it. Yeah, Peter?
I'll just say there are a number of buildings in and near the plaza that could use a paint job, and I don't know if we have any say about that, but, you know, it's true. It detracts from the general feeling of being around those buildings.
You know, on a broader subject, we're trying to kind of create a more robust economy of the downtown and housing and all the stuff that we did with the gateway is a bigger part of all of that as well. It's related, and city tax base that can support some of these things that we would all like to see, benches and, you know, bike lanes and everything else, are all part of that. It feels to me like if we're going to sit with the City Council, we need to get back towards kind of finishing this last two-year project of Gateway and some general plan stuff, and what's going to start getting these housing projects going the soonest? You know, what's, what's in the way here? And if we can tweak it a little bit by sitting with them, that, to me, feels like it rises to the highest level.
David, when you were describing the possible activities that the grant might support, you mentioned marketing, and it seems to me, I mean, we, we have spent a lot of time developing all these rules and suggestions for affordable housing in our community, and it's not happening. I mean, we approved that 22-unit apartment at, down by Greenview Market, it's still vacant. We approved an apartment at 12th and I Street, it's still vacant. How can we, how can we encourage developers to build in Arcata? And should that be part of what we do or not? I don't know.
I think that's a, you know, probably a topic unto itself, you know, like an agenda topic unto itself that we could talk about. I guess just in brief, I would say that from what I know of the two projects that you've mentioned, the developers are still planning on building. It just, it takes time to, you know, to get things in line. Once you've got that approval, it's not uncommon to see, you know, a year go by after something's approved before you start seeing ground being broken, in particular with the delays that are happening with, you know, getting electric service and that sort of thing associated with these projects. So, you know, and then you also have to recognize that, you know, development is really expensive, and so, you know, getting a project that's, you know, both approvable and feasible, there's sort of a sweet spot in there that you have to arrive at. So yeah, I do think that the Planning Commission and the City Council have a huge role in structuring their, you know, recommendations and ultimately the decisions they make around land use so that it's, you know, resulting in development that we want to see in our community. I think, you know, part of, that was sort of the underlying motivation for the Gateway Area Plan, and I think as it, you know, plays out of the course of the next year, we will, you know, get to see which areas we need to tweak to make it so that it meets that vision.
I mean, to piggyback on that, one of the things we could do is, and I don't want to talk about it tonight necessarily, but I think it is on our list of things to possibly discuss with the City Council is revisit inclusionary zoning, because I think that is going to be a barrier cost-wise for development. I know we've talked about it a lot, but it's, you know, something that might be worth talking with the city about, the City Council.
Do, this is a question, do we as a body take an active role in trying to encourage development so that we start solving our housing problem? I mean, is, is that something we do?
I mean, it feels to me like it's one piece of it, right? We're balancing building housing, but also trying to do so in a way that meets what our needs are as a community, not just at any cost. Go ahead, Dan, sorry.
As long as I've been on the city, I'm sorry, planting, that's been a theme, to reduce barriers to development. And it wasn't across the dais here, but there was generally a theme amongst the collective here that we are trying to reduce barriers to development in the city of Arcata, which doesn't mean rubber stamping, it means doing it our way, and I feel like the gateway was a great process of exploring what our way looks like, so that people aren't applying to the state of California for these permits and building whatever box they want. You know, I think we've done a lot of work towards reducing those barriers, ministerial review, the, you know, there's so many different things that we've talked about intensely that are part of making this a more attractive place to build. I'd like to see us finish that. I want to see these things get built. I'm excited about it. And it doesn't mean building ugly or, you know, giving away the keys to the city to these developers. It means a more robust Arcata. People want to live here, but it's a hard place to build. And I've heard this from the outside of this setting so many times amongst conversations about planning and Arcata and all this stuff. Oh, Arcata, Arcata's a hard town, you know, you've got too many people that care too much, and everything you try to do, too many people are in the way and showing up and all the ordinances and everything. And, you know, I think that's part of why we're all here, but, you know, we really are recognizing that there's a crisis in the state of California, that state law is preempting city laws right and left on this stuff. So if we're going to do anything that we like, we better make it easy to do it, or the development will happen in other places. And Arcata won't be able to afford to tackle these kind of infrastructure problems that keep coming up in these discussions, you know? It's all part of it together. And I raised my hand to say that I am here to make development easier in Arcata. So yes, the answer to you.
David, is, is what your goal here for us to submit a list of possible discussion topics that would be forwarded to the city manager to decide agenda-wise regarding our joint study session? Is that where we're at?
Yes.
Okay. And how does the, and in your, did you intend your list of possible discussion items to be something that we may just adopt as a batch or amend or add to?
Yeah, it's really up to y'all. If you want to say, yeah, we'd like to see all four of those topics, we want to rank them. all four of those topics, we want to rank them this way, we want to take this topic off, we want to add this topic on. So I really did intend it to be, you know, pretty open conversation. It doesn't have to be in-depth, you guys can go as deep as you want, but it could be just, as you say, yeah, we want to ratify that list and move on.
How, how does everyone feel about the list of possible items? Or is that something we just want to sort of adopt? Is there anything missing there that people feel strongly about that we want to sort of take up now while we're all together? Obviously, we're not trying to discuss issues, but just to name issues for future discussion in our joint study, so let's just keep that in mind. Given that, any, any additions that aren't on that list? Matt?
Well, so we already sort of discussed it, but the vacancy tax issue, which I know we, we could lump together with other things, but I think is sort of a novel idea that we could bring to the city council and see what they think about it.
Is, is anyone opposed to adding the vacancy tax issue to our list of proposed items?
Do we have enough information to have viable discussion on that with them?
Well, so I guess the way I was thinking of it is that the purpose of these is sort of to talk at a high level about stuff, and then it would get sent back to either us or them to sort of move along, but that it could be helpful to introduce these ideas at a study session. And so, you know, at the study session, staff could give a brief presentation about, you know, even just Eureka's vacancy tax that they're working on right now. And then we could discuss whether or not that was something we wanted to do. And then we wouldn't like finalize language at that meeting, we would just have direction from city council.
Yeah, I would imagine the idea would be that, not that we would have that together for a discussion this evening, but by naming the topic, it gives us time between now and the end of October to have that material ready out to commissioners and city council members to prepare for that discussion. Peter?
I'll just remind everybody what David said, which is, an hour and a half is a short period of time. And I think we should limit our, our items to a small number, because otherwise it'll just get away from us.
Well, ultimately, it's up to the city manager to decide on the agenda. We're just trying to think of topics we might like to suggest. So how does everyone, is, is anyone opposed to adding the vacancy tax question for consideration?
No, if it was a brief, just, and are we maybe saying that as a straw poll, we support that this topic as a future agenda item for both them and us?
Correct.
Okay, I'm all for that, sure. That sounds brief.
Anybody opposed? Okay. So let's add that to the list. And I would also like to see if there's anything that's on the list that commissioners would like removed and doesn't think is important to discuss as a possible, that doesn't think is important to include as a possible.
I'll throw in the local coastal program update. I, I hate to say that, because I know how critical it is, and I know it's been percolating along, and there's a lot of frustration that it hasn't happened sooner and things like that. However, it doesn't feel like something that is so pertinent to kind of the momentum of the discussion that we're kind of completing this cycle, this two-year cycle.
Does anyone else want to support removing the local coastal program from our list of proposed items to discuss with the city council?
I would just throw out that if the local coastal program was in there, that would be pretty much the entire discussion.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm fine taking that off.
I would agree. I think that that's such a huge discussion.
Joel, Peter, Matt?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with removing it.
Okay, let's pull that off the list.
Now, can I also maybe nudge that the scissor gate thing is perhaps kind of wrapped up in this, you know, ordinance zoning about vacant buildings, right? So, I mean, do we really, we don't want to tackle scissor gates with the city council, right?
I think we have to be realistic with how much we can really get done.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's such a design thing, and there's so many little tiny nuances about it that we've been around and around about.
Yeah, I, I think our most important, the most important task we need to get done is to talk about what we need to do to encourage housing. And I think what you said, Scott, about considering inclusionary zoning and density bonus issues to make it easier to build housing, what do we do about them to make it easier to build housing?
I mean, likewise, inclusionary zoning and density bonus could be a full discussion with both bodies, or at least a good chunk of it. So let's make the additions and subtractions that we discussed, and are we in agreement that as far as priority, the inclusionary zoning and density bonus pieces are most important as they feel most directly tied to encouraging development that we've been working on? Is that, does everyone feel broadly aligned?
Yes, however, remind me, I thought that what we, when we had a big discussion about this, I forget, three meetings back or two meetings back, didn't we slightly disagree with the city council and what we forwarded to them was slightly different? So we haven't heard back from them on this subject, or have we?
But you, you probably know better than I do.
The planning commission did make a recommendation, the city council, after, actually, a earlier joint study session said, you know, well, we want to reduce the threshold, reduce the, the trigger point, and increase the number of units that are required. Ultimately, the planning commission was, you know, tasked with making a recommendation, not only on inclusionary zoning, but on, you know, other parts of, of the overall land use changes. And I think this body recognized, well, the city council has given us direction, so we're going to recommend back to them what they told us they wanted us to recommend. And so here would be an opportunity, you know, to take a look at the language that has been developed for inclusionary zoning and density bonus, have drafted an ordinance for those. You've reviewed that draft ordinance one time. And just have a follow-up conversation before we go into adoption hearings on that legislation to check in. Because you're absolutely correct, there was a difference of opinion on, on approach, and it would be sort of, you know, a last opportunity for the planning commission to make those concerns known before getting into approval hearings. I do think that, you know, it is a fairly substantial, you know, body of information to discuss. I don't think it's a full meeting, I don't think it's a full hour and a half, but I could see it being a, you know, a third of a meeting, like half-hour discussion.
I, I will just add, though, that I feel like city council has also discussed it. Like, I've watched their meetings where they talk about it, and they've also talked. And so I don't even know that we're going to be able to reach any sort of new consensus. I think it's always good to talk about it, and I, I think we can all share our points of view. I just, maybe if we go around in a circle and everyone says what they think, and then no one changes their mind, we can just move on to the next topic.
Agreed.
Sorry, ultimately, on that topic, it was about balancing the density bonus and inclusionary zoning, right? So that builders didn't just always opt for density bonus and, and then none of our ordinances matter, right? So if that's all we're discussing with them, like, where's that tipping point? Where's the fine line here? Isn't that where we went around and around?
I mean, we're, we're never going to know.
Right. So we're kind of guessing, we'd like to see some applications come forward to build some projects and see which way to go.
We're never going to know by continuing to talk about it.
Right, right. So I would hate to spend too much time just going around in circles. Like, we just need to throw something out there and see what happens.
I think at this point, we reiterate our position as a planning commission in hopes that it pulls the city council back down closer to or equal to our initial recommendation. Outside that, reviewing the substance of the matter feels like beating a dead horse at a certain point.
All right. So we all agree, we wouldn't want to stay very long on that topic.
But that it's important.
Yeah.
So, given the addition, the subtraction, and the priority issue around encouraging housing, is there any other changes we want to make to this list that we recommend to the city manager? Go ahead, Dan.
On the HUD pro housing thing, ultimately, it comes down to just what tasks they spend the money on, or target most, right? Like, if they're going to review the, what's it called? I'm sorry, there was a
Form-based.
Form-based code on the Plaza District and the Gateway District, right? Those were two potential topics. Is that kind of what we're thinking we'll be chewing on with them on that topic? Or more? I mean, is, I don't know. I don't know what more. We have enough information to really talk about that with. We're thrilled by the grant, we all agree. It's probably the most pro-housing thing on this page.
Yeah, I think, you know, it would be a good touch point just to reiterate the basic principles, you know, the concepts of having principally permitted, you know, projects that comply with the form-based codes and, you know, those, those types of topics, picking the regions, you know, I mean, I think that the Valley West, Valley East, and infill opportunity zone is sort of the next area we should focus on. And so, you know, having a discussion about, you know, prioritization of the remaining infill opportunity zones and where to concentrate efforts there, I think would be a, an important point of discussion. You know, I think that, you know, talking about the engagement strategies and, you know, where lessons learned from the gateway and where we want to make sure that we enhance our engagement for this next round, I think all of those are, you know, probably good, you know, topics. So, you know, we don't have to get too in-depth, but just to have a round-robin brainstorming so that, you know, staff and, and the planning commission kind of get oriented to those topics. I think that's, you know, that's what we'd be looking for.
David, what did you say in your grant proposal? Don't you have to pretty much do what you said you were going to do?
We said that we were going to do form-based codes in at least two infill opportunity zones. And so, you know, what that ultimately looks like is still a very open public process. And, you know, what happened with the gateway was it took eight years to go from concept to funding to engagement to decision. And all of the important decisions that everyone was fired up about early on in that process, many of those people were gone by the time we made a decision. Many of those people were gone by the time we had funding associated with it. We're at a rare opportunity where we have money, we can start, like, in the next couple of months, we're going to be starting this work. And so, having the folks that are going to be involved in the decision-making process, really engaged in the, you know, fleshing out what the scope of work is going to look like, and, and ensuring that, you know, hey, you know, I really appreciated this element of our public engagement last time, I want to make sure that we emphasize, you know, this other thing, because I feel like we fell down a little bit there. Those kinds of conversations are really relevant now, because you'll all be in the room, you'll all be in the room at the beginning and at the end.
So you're asking us to kind of set the, the agenda for
Start setting
How the form, because you, you said you've got to do form-based codes for two areas, right?
Yeah.
The question is, how are we going to do that? Is that what we're talking about?
Setting the general parameters, yeah.
But just to be clear, tonight, we're just trying to decide ideas to suggest.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything to add, or?
That sounds like a really important part of the discussion, that joint study session.
Yeah, so if we're ranking these, right, should we put that first, and then density bonus versus, right, like, because it's not just, not to add more work, but not just a list, but what order is the list could matter. And I feel like maybe there's agreement here that some things are at the top of the list and some things are at the bottom of the list.
Well, does someone want to propose a sequence that we can?
Go, Matt.
Okay, so what to do with the HUD grant, right? Number two, inclusionary zoning and density bonus. Number three, I'm more excited to talk about vacancy tax than about scissor gates personally. So I'm going to say vacancy tax and then scissor gates and the issue of the plaza is like a vague bottom one.
And I would second that list.
I don't think I left anything off, because we dropped the local coastal program and, yeah.
Does everyone feel comfortable with that priority?
I do. I, I would like us to emphasize that our discussion of inclusionary zoning and density bonus is with an attempt to make it easier and attract development here in Arcata.
That's what you should lead with when we have our joint study session?
Yes, sir.
Everyone okay with that list and that priority? David, does that give you what you need from a staff perspective to send on?
Golden.
Okay. Great. Okay. Well, thank you very much for that discussion. I appreciate everyone's input. I feel like we made a good recommendation list and priorities. Thank you for that. Moving on to correspondence and communications, do we have any correspondence from planning commission members this evening?
I'd like to talk about something. There was a zoning administrator hearing last week on a retail sales permit for a business in the Alder Grove Industrial Park. I don't know whether my fellow commissioners knew about that application. My point in bringing this up is to kind of ask for a straw poll of whether the commission wants to appeal the zoning administrator's determination. In brief, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant proposes a quote retail site, which is basically around 100 square foot room in an industrial building in Alder Grove Industrial Park, and needs a retail permit because the zoning there does not require that for retail sales. What this business will be, it will be a firearms dealer, or firearms sales, and the way it will operate in 100 square feet room in the interior somewhere of, of an industrial building, is if you, as a gun buyer, makes an order, a mail order of a, of a firearm, it will be shipped to this location. The location will do all the processing that's required by the various governmental entities, and then arrange for, after the appropriate waiting period, for the buyer to come in and pick up the firearm and leave. There are certain governmental requirements that may, I'm not sure whether they were actually made conditions of approval or not, but they have to comply with, you know, federal, state, and whatever the other local law may be on firearm sales. I had, the applicant said that he would sell any type of firearm that's legal in the state of California, and he thought he'd only have around five to 10 sales a month. The applicant is a certified gun instructor and with no retail sales experience. My concern is that when the zoning administrator approved this permit, there was no limitation on the number of sales a month that this person could provide. And during the public hearing, he said he, he would be willing to accept a 10 sales a month limitation. The zoning administrator struck that and did not limit the number of sales. So that's one of my concerns, is whether this commission wants to impose a, well, think about whether that's appropriate to have unlimited sales at this location. The other issue is insurance, and I wasn't totally clear on this, but it's my understanding that, I think it's federal law requires a minimum of $1 million of liability insurance, which, to me, if something goes wrong, is probably going to be inadequate to cover any kind of loss. And so I was thinking, personally, you know, I would opt to have a higher insurance requirement than that if, as a condition of approval. So that's it, that's, I wanted to put it out there to see if there's any interest on this commission to take another look by appealing this permit.
Is it appropriate for us to review something like this during correspondence and communications?
I think that the correspondence and communications are I think that the Correspondence and Communications are intended to be brief and not open to deliberations. There's really few opportunities for the commission to indicate that they wish to appeal a decision. And so, you know, technically, you know, decision of the commission should be, you know, agendized as such, so it is, you know, a little bit, you know, awkward to discuss it. If I, you know, saw that there was a, you know, majority of commissioners that wanted to initiate an appeal, I think we'd take an administrative action at the department level to do that.
I mean, I can remember when there was gun sales on the Plaza myself, a very long time, and I can think of at least five gun shops in Eureka.
And there is one in Valley West.
And there's one in Valley West. I don't feel a need to review this myself, but I want to respect the group decision. However, I do think we should agendize this and not take Correspondence and Communications to discuss it, so.
There is only 10 days from the date of approval, which was last Thursday, to initiate an appeal, so.
So if we're not going to do it in Correspondence and Communications, then what would the pathway be?
To, basically, a, you know, member of the public could initiate an appeal. We've had instances in the past where the City Council has, you know, taken special considerations for the appeal fee, but typically, it's the public member's responsibility to, you know, initiate the appeal, pay for the fee, and then that appeal goes to the next highest appeal body. Once that appeal is initiated, the, you know, again, that appeal decision can be appealed to the City Council, because zoning administrator would go to the Planning Commission, you know, and ultimately, the City Council could choose to take up the appeal themselves.
Okay.
So, long story short.
There's not really a pathway for us to discuss this right now, either way.
There's no discussion. If a majority of you, through a straw poll, wish to appeal it, I'll initiate an appeal administratively.
Okay. Show of hands, then, for commissioners who would like to appeal the zoning administration, the zoning administrator hearing that Joel brought to us? Okay. Go ahead, Abby.
Just to be clear, we're not asking questions of the project at this time, it is not the place.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess I just want to add that individual members of the public can appeal, and, yeah.
That's probably a better pathway. Do we have any correspondence from staff?
The only correspondence I wanted to let the commission know is that the, I'm sorry, City Council, the Coastal Commission is holding a hearing on September 11th, where they're going to be reviewing some work that they've been doing with the Local Government Working Group, which is a group that had convened to discuss matters of, you know, adaptation planning and some of the differences in approaches that local jurisdictions were having versus Coastal Commission's interpretation of the Coastal Act and how that was being applied. And so what has ultimately come out of these discussions over the past couple of years, since I think about 2019, is this neighborhood-scale adaptation approach, which seems to align pretty closely with what we've been talking about for the last, you know, five years or so in our local coastal planning work. And so I'm pretty excited about the direction that the group has been working, and I've been invited to speak to the commission on the 11th. And so just wanted to alert the commission to that upcoming meeting and to, you know, either tune into it, or I'll report out when I get back, or both. So, yeah, it's just, it's really encouraging. I think the Coastal Commission has really taken a, you know, an interest in trying to bridge the gaps historically have, you know, existed between local agencies and the commission, and I'm seeing this as sort of the fruits of those labors. So just wanted to let the commission know about that.
Where's the meeting?
It's in Monterey. So, yeah, but there's an option to attend via Zoom, so if you wanted to tune in and watch, I can send out that information.
Yeah, send a Zoom link. Dan?
Yeah, a quick question. Is there any Brown Act issues with us showing up at the Warfinger on the climate?
Good question.
You know, this is one of those things where it is going to be subject matter before you, so it's a little, it's a gray area. I would say if the majority of you end up there, don't talk to one another. Don't be seen with one another. Play it cool. Wearing cognitoid sunglasses, you know, that sort of thing.
All right. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.